Let's go ahead and call the main tour, and have Rob call.
Kessler.
Here.
Walters.
Rorden.
Here.
Ebert. Binner.
Here.
Parton.
Here.
Crum.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
If occasion denied, we give advice passed for this coming from the resurrection movement.
Good evening. Let us pray. Gracious God, we ask you to send your Holy Spirit upon the members of our city council. Bless them in their deliberations, guide them in the decisions they make for our city. We ask you to keep all those who work for our city in your care. In all that they do, let them do it for good and with the knowledge that you are active and calling them in their vocations. Thank you for the ways they give of their time, give of their talent, and let them use it for the betterment of our community. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Congratulations.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Presentation approval of minutes of February twenty-four, 2020. Mr. Binner.
May I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the February twenty-fourth, this date?
Second. Most second to approve the minutes of February twenty-fourth, night twenty. Discussion? Question?
Kessler.
Yes.
Rorden.
Yes.
Binner.
Yes.
Parton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
I'm staying.
Item one, citizens to be heard. We have no citizens to be heard. Item two, approval license bonds. A, the manufacturing on Park License Renewal for the Park Avenue Estates. Ms. Parton.
Make a motion to accept the renewal for Park Avenue Estates.
Second.
Most second to approve the renewal on Park Avenue. Discussion? Question?
Kessler.
Yes.
Rorden.
Yes.
Binner.
Yes.
Parton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Item three, introduction ordinance and resolutions, and this is a resolution, I'm gonna paraphrase it and not read the whole thing, but for issuance and sale of a temporary note in general obligation, temporary note series twenty twenty. And this is for the Country Lakes petition for additional lots that are going over there.
So Brett Shogren could not be here tonight, but he gave us a memo outlining the details. This morning at eleven, they opened up and checked the bids that we got. The second best bid was from Country Club Bank, and the true interest cost was 1.19%. And then the best bid was from Central State's Capital Markets, true interest cost of .99%. So, he said it's the first one he's seen under 1%, so it's a good time for us to borrow the money. What you got there is the note resolution, which accepts the Central State bid at .994492% and authorizes the necessary documents.
Anyone want to make that motion? Mr. Crum.
I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution authorizing and directing the issuance, sale, and delivery of general obligation temporary note series A, 2020, in the City of Hayville, Kansas, as presented at the .99, et cetera.
Second.
Most second to approve the resolution as presented. Discussion? Question?
Kessler.
Yes.
Rorden.
Yes.
Binner.
Yes.
Parton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Item four, no communication. Anyone want those from the council? Mr. Crum.
At the library. I'll make the font bigger here so I can see what I'm reading. Tomorrow, there'll be a Friends of the Library meeting at 5:30. Also tomorrow at 6 o'clock, they'll be having a Medicare seminar there. On the twelfth, from four to six is the next Lego Club meeting. On March fourteenth, from ten to two, they will be celebrating Pie Day. I believe they'll be selling pies during that time. Also on the fourteenth, a genealogy group meeting, and there's also a children's health fair from two to five on the fourteenth. And then H3 is taking registrations for their O6O walks. You can sign up at the Learning Center, where you can go to their Facebook page and click to register online. The first fifteen full teams that get registered will get shirts, and I believe they already have seven full teams registered and parts of three or four other teams, so there's still maybe some time to get in there to get shirts. Also wanted to mention at the high school, the past week, the boys bowling team took, placed fifth at state, and the girls won state, they took first. That's actually the third time in a row they've won state, and they've actually won state now five out of the last six years. Also wanted to mention that the boys won substate. They're still undefeated. I believe they're 22-0 and 23-0. They will be playing Manhattan in the first round of the state tournament at Coke Arena on Thursday night at 6:30, if you're interested in going out and cheering them on. And also just wanted to kind of wish luck to all the middle school students and all the high school students that are going out for spring activities that are, that have just started up. And that's all I have.
Anything else, council, before I read the senior center announcements? Not seeing anything. Thursday, March twelfth, they have a lunch outing to the Crackle Barrel at eleven. Friday, March thirteenth, is a senior birthday dinner at 5:30. Saturday, March fourteenth, is the floral bicycle painting party at eleven and two. And there's still spots available for $10 if you would like to sign up. Wednesday, eighteenth, is commodities at one o'clock, and then Thursday, March nineteenth, bingo at 12:30. That will then move on to item five, old business. Previously, we had the beer gardens that we're looking at in Riggs Park. Had staff come back with the other beer garden setups to kind of standardize them. One thing I think that we want to make sure that anyone that may want to not go by these standards still has the right to apply for a different size if they wanted to do some type of different size, so. Mr. Kessler?
Appreciate staff for, you know, bringing this up to us. You know, I don't mind the, like, the lion shelter and the, you know, the hack. I mean, all that kind of makes sense. But, you know, like I've said, you know, previously, right there at the Riggs Park for the band shelter, or band, the, yeah, the band area. The, I mean, just to have a small area off the side, I don't particularly like that idea because what if somebody wants to have it on the other side, or wants to have it in the middle? I mean, why not give people that apply for the venue, you know, make that determination where they want to have that area? There's no reason to segregate people that want to have a beer against other people that don't want to have a beer. I mean, I don't do it in my home, we don't do it at restaurants, you don't do it at Texas Roadhouse of restaurants, you don't do it at Applebee's, you don't do it at Mexican restaurants. Everybody's together. So I'm gonna make a motion to accept this, with the exception of the Riggs Park band shelter, to make that as presented, as it was presented originally by staff at the February tenth meeting.
Not hearing a second anywhere. I guess, what was presented? This was the same thing that was presented, wasn't it?
The February tenth meeting, what, in the whole area?
Oh, okay. So you're saying what you're, to make it the whole area?
Right, it was originally presented by staff.
Right back, back.
Two meetings ago.
Okay, okay.
Which would include the whole, you know, the front end of the, of the shelter there, of the band, band thing.
Yeah, it takes care of all the front end of the Riggs Park, in front of the band shelter also.
Right, yeah, in front of the band shelter.
Okay, okay. I still haven't heard a second. With that one, it'll die. Any other motion? Mr. Crum?
I do appreciate the work staff did. The only one that I would like to see different, but I'll probably be willing to let it go, is the activity center with, including the patio. My biggest concern for that is that I think it's really hard to regulate what goes on the patio. Once they go outside, you can't really see who they could be passing stuff off or, or other things like that. That's my only concern with the way this is set up. With that being said, I know that, I don't know what everybody else thinks about that. Like I said, that's my only concern. I don't, I think the rest of it's all good. I appreciate the fact that Door to Park's listed and we'll identify once that's all set up and stuff like that. With that being said, I guess I would go ahead and make a motion that we accept this as presented.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, to accept the standard beer garden setup as presented. Discussion? Question?
Kessler.
No.
Rorden.
Yes.
Binner.
Yes.
Parton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Crum?
This is a different item, and it's under old business, so that's why I was gonna go ahead and bring it up. I had made the motion before. We had the party in the O6O set up like we had at Fall Fest last time. I would be willing to make a motion to allow O6O to set it up as presented in this packet, if they would prefer to do that.
What are you talking about, over in front of?
When we did the party in the O6O, we, I made the motion so that they could have it set up like we had it set up last time at Fall Fest. So the smaller, it was a smaller area, it didn't go over to the side, it was, it just wasn't as big or set up like is presented now.
Because last time it was over by the hack, it wasn't in, in.
I mean, but, correct, but we set it up, did we not just pass it so that it could be set up like we had it set up?
For this year's party in the O6O, they motioned to have it set up like Fall Fest was set up last year.
So what I'm saying is, I'm willing to make a motion to go ahead and let them set it up.
If they want to do it that way.
As presented in this packet, if they would prefer to do that.
Okay. O6O committee had kind of come up with the one that's there now. Is that?
Right. Yeah, I thought we tabled it, waiting for the, the outcome.
Yeah, I thought we had tabled it. They had, you guys had not, am I wrong on that?
It was initially approved, like Councilmember Crum said, where they gave us the approval for the party in the O6O for this year's event with the same beer garden setup.
To be set up as what Fall Fest was, right?
Yeah, and now with this being approved, it's the new layout, standard layout. I think he's making a motion to set it up this year's party.
Right, we tabled that and came back with this.
Well, I don't think we actually did table. That's why I want to go ahead and make a motion and say that we can.
But the whole thing was tabled last time.
Yeah, that whole thing was tabled until they got this figured out.
I think this was tabled, but I think the meeting before, we had actually just.
Right, February tenth meeting.
Okayed it to be set up like it was.
Be set up as.
Yes, that's correct.
So I guess I'm just kind of, I want to make a motion that we allow party in the O6O this year to set up the beer garden as presented in tonight's thing, if they prefer to do that. Or like, would you guys prefer to do it that way? Is that what you're planning on right now?
Giving a little more flexibility to them.
Yes.
Okay.
I would second that.
They plan standing up this way, the stand, going with the standard layout.
Okay, but I want to make sure we make them, because I'm pretty sure that it's actually in the minutes that we were gonna let it set up like the Fall Fest. So I want to make sure that we allow O6O to set up like presented tonight.
Okay, so they have that flexibility to do it either way from what your motion is and second at this point. So, anybody understand the motion? Okay, question?
Kessler.
Yes.
Rorden.
Yes.
Binner.
Yes.
Parton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Okay. So they got flexibility to do it either way. We are now down to item six, other business. A, request for the Riggs Park Fall Festival. I don't see anybody out there.
I don't know, I'm still reading. I do have a question on the other bill, though. Is, is, are we gonna allow under 21 in the beer garden?
Yeah, with an adult. Yes, with an adult.
Okay. Other hat on. I am before you to ask the use of Riggs Park, October sixteenth through the eighteenth, for the Fall Festival issue.
You have any dates?
October sixteenth through the eighteenth.
Mr. Kessler?
I think we should allow Fall Festival to use Riggs Park for October sixteenth through the eighteenth.
Second.
Most second to allow the use of the Fall Festival, Riggs Park for the Fall Festival as presented. Question?
Kessler.
Yes.
Rorden.
Yes.
Binner.
Yes.
Parton.
Stay.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Item B is consideration for the senior center expansion. We have expanded it by 1,900 square feet, but now they'd like to actually put some pool tables and other things in there instead of just having a large, open area. So you've got what they have requested for equipment to be put in there, so we're looking at approval to spend that much money for equipment over in the senior center. Mr. Crum?
First off, I gotta, curious, we're taking them out of capital improvements. Whenever we're getting stuff for activities like this in the senior center or stuff like that, is there any way to use that out of some of the sales tax money, or is?
Your sales tax is truly specific as to where it goes.
That's why I didn't know if that was, if that would be considered recreation.
It's actually going in their senior center.
Okay, okay. So I was just trying to figure out if there, if we have, what kind of flexibility we have with the sales tax money as far as, because it's recs, park, and streets, and I didn't know what all rec actually covered.
Well, to me, it actually goes into the, the rec department, and it goes in the park department, and it goes in the street department.
The senior center in a separate?
Senior center is not in either one of those.
Okay.
Any of those three.
Okay.
Now, it doesn't say that, if they were to come to the, the Activity Center and ask them to spend some money there, that's up to them, but it actually goes into the rec department.
Okay. Well, then with that being answered, I'll make a motion that we approve the equipment as requested by the senior center as presented.
Second.
Most second to approve the purchase of equipment for senior center as presented. Discussion? Question?
Kessler.
Yes.
Rorden.
Yes.
Binner.
Yes.
Parton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Item C is the consideration agreement with the Hayesville Swim Club. My understanding, this agreement is the same, except for the changes of the, the dates, and they're not having their same meets at this point, is what my understanding is with the change, any changes that we have here. Is that right, Rob?
Yes.
Okay. And Rob's here to answer any questions, if you would like to pin him down. Mr. Sperr?
Make a motion that we approve the agreement with Hayesville Swim Club.
Second.
Motion, second, to approve the agreement with Swim Club. Discussion, Mr. Kessler?
Yeah, it looks like the price went down quite a bit, by about 33%, like 150 down to $100 per day for the use of it. Just wonder why the price went down that much.
That was just the league championship.
Yes, the, the normal, the normal swim meets are only $100, and the, the league championship was 150.
The league championship transfers every two years, and we've already had it two years, so we're not having it this year. And that causes the pool to be shut down all day, so they charge more. But we're not doing that this year.
So it actually didn't drop any from what the regular charge.
Okay, so it's for the final swim meet?
Yeah, since there's no, there's no finals in Hayesville this year.
Okay.
Question?
Kessler.
Yes.
Rorden.
Yes.
Binner.
Yes.
Parton.
Yes.
Crum.
I'm staying.
Thompson.
Yes.
Item D, consideration of pool pricing for the 2020 season. And my understanding is there's only one change, which is what was brought to you, and that was the $80 for experience cards, or $100 for the manager for swim lessons, private swim lessons.
Correct.
Mr. Kessler?
I think we should approve the pool pricing for 2020.
Second.
Most second to approve the pool pricing for 2020. Discussion? Question?
Kessler.
Yes.
Rorden.
Yes.
Binner.
Yes.
Parton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Item E is consideration revision to the subdivision regulations. Here's where you can put Angie on the spot if you'd like. Mr. Parton, a question for where he gets there?
Well, no, I just, looking at this over the weekend, there, this is quite a bit of reading. It's quite a bit to digest and everything, and I would just like to make a motion that we tabled this to the next meeting to give everybody a chance to go completely through it. I'm, I mean, I'm a pretty fast reader, but it was quite a bit of reading, trying to digest everything that's in it, so.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to table? Question?
Kessler.
Could we have the session first?
Not on, not on the table.
Uh, yes.
Rorden.
Yes.
Binner.
Yes.
Parton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
If you have any questions, though, get old Angie before, and she can answer those.
Okay.
And we'll take them next time, too, if you have any questions.
Okay.
Okay, I'll just, I'll just, I'll just suggest if she had anything to say about it.
I don't think she has anything to say now, do you, Angie?
No, I think it's pretty clear in the memo, but if you have any questions, feel free to call me or email.
And we're not letting her go anywhere else either, here. We're gonna go to F, the consideration revisions of the land use map, which is the urban growth boundaries. As you can see, that's expanded, as they were asking for those, but Andy, can I ask you any questions you have from the urban growth boundaries? Mr. Kessler?
Uh, looks like the, the boundaries have shrunk. Was it?
From what was adopted, I think it was back in 2011, but then in 2015, it changed and was reduced. But our actual land use map never changed, and we are actually requesting additional area, which includes this corner right here that wasn't in the original. And we need to show that we would like to grow there in order for the Sedgwick County to increase our boundaries for what they have currently. And that gives us the ability to review the plans that come before Sedgwick County for zoning and subdivision regulations, so we can take a look at more of what we think is gonna be within our area of growth someday.
Used to be the three-mile area, but they did away with that. It only went to your urban growth and boundaries over there. So this is an expansion of our urban growth boundaries.
So did, did we move north a little bit and west on the east side?
We moved south.
Please.
South and west, wasn't that?
We moved a little to the north to get up to campus for the, just that little section, and then mostly to the west and south.
Okay, I was talking about on the, I was talking about on the south side of it. It looks like the blue line is further south than where the proposed line is. So I just wanted.
The, the blue line, back when we did the three-mile, it would have been further south, but back in 2015, they raised it up to a mile and a half north of that, so.
So which one is 95th?
It's really confusing. 95th is the red line.
The red line, not the blue one, okay.
Which is outside our urban growth area.
Right.
Okay.
Any other questions? Anybody want to approve it? Nobody wants to approve it. I think we're done. Mr. Kessler?
I think we should approve the revisions in the land use map, urban, urban, urban growth boundaries.
Second.
Most second to approve the revisions to the urban growth boundaries. Discussion? Question?
Kessler.
Yes.
Rorden.
Yes.
Binner.
Yes.
Parton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
We'll make this one a little easier. So, this consideration of zone change, 400 West 79th Street South. It was presently double A, single family. We are moving it to A, single family. From A, 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 single family to A, single family, so we can truly have Door to Park. We don't change it, we're kind of, Mr. Rorden?
Well, I'm gonna show my ignorance here, but what is the difference between A and double A family?
The biggest differences would be within the size restrictions on the lots and the size of houses that could be built, constructed. But within the uses, within double A, a park is a conditional use, and in single A, it's an allowed use, permitted by right. So if we were to want to, the problem with a conditional use is, yes, you can put some restrictions, but if you ever want to change those restrictions, it's another public hearing process. So if we can have it permitted by right, then the city can make those decisions going forward without having to do that.
Other questions, Angie? Anyone want to make a motion? Mr. Kessler?
I think we should approve the zone change from 400 West 79th Street South from A, A, single family to A, single family.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Crum?
Nope, I was just gonna make a motion, can you just be me doing it?
Have a motion and a second to approve the 79th Street change. Discussion? Question?
Kessler.
Yes.
Rorden.
Yes.
Binner.
Yes.
Parton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
You're up, Will.
I have no announcements.
Janie's out here, she doesn't have anything either. Chief?
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. Our visiting officer this evening is Officer Subi. He's out there, he is one of our night shift officers. So just say hi to him as you go by out there. Also, our monthly coffee with the cop is coming up this Wednesday on the eleventh, and it'll be at WSU Hayesville at 106 Stewart, and this time it'll be from five until 6:30 in the evening, so it won't be in the morning, it'll be in the evening, so five to 6:30. So if you wanna come out and see us, come on over. Thanks.
Tony?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Last week, the mayor approved an emergency purchase of pump for the wastewater plant from fluid equipment in the amount of $14,952. This pump discharges sludge to the digesters, is an important piece to our treatment process.
If the present pump we have goes down, that's kind of hard to process any sludge over there, which would, which would not be nice. Rob?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We, sorry, the Hayesville Activity Center is continuing registration for the party in the O6O 5K and Cornerhold Tournament, and we still have space for registration for spring break camp next week.
Do you have a temporary count, what you've had numbered? For registration on baseball?
Uh, baseball, we're up over 350.
Over 350 for baseball registration? Okay, that sounds like it's up.
We're up from last season, yes, yeah.
Item eight, appointments. A, Nicole Franken, 213 Timberland Court. Appointment to the planning commission for one remainder of the three-year term. Ms. Dr. Crum?
Uh, make a motion that we allow the appointment of Nicole Franken, 213 Timberland Court, for an appointment to the planning commission, Ward one, for the remainder of a three-year term.
Second.
Most second to approve the appointment of Nicole Franken. Discussion? Question?
Kessler.
Yes.
Rorden.
Yes.
Binner.
Yes.
Parton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Item nine, enough of justice to be heard. Anyone that would like to come forward to speak to council, now is the time. Seeing no one, we'll move on to item 10, executive session. We have none. Item 11, bills to be paid. A, bills to be paid for the first half of March. Mr. Rorden?
I think we should pay the bills for the first half of March. Second.
Most second to pay the bills for first half of March. Discussion? Question?
Kessler.
Yes.
Rorden.
Yes.
Binner.
Yes.
Parton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Well, we sent agenda, we have nothing. Item 13, council concerns, council. Mr. Crum?
First couple aren't a concern. I did want to point out, I had messaged Tony, the county did get out to 63rd Meridian and got a crosswalk put down the other day. I also wanted to remind everybody that spring break is next week, so you may see some kids out running around during the day when you maybe aren't used to it, so please watch out for them. Then I did have a question on the notices the city puts out. I don't know if it's from Public Works or from the police department, like whenever there's a water break or something like that. We had a, I believe, a power pole or something that cracked, and I know the road got blocked off, which I didn't get a notice for that, but I did get a notice when the street opened back up. So alls I got was a notice that said, East Grand is now open back up, but I never got one to tell me that, that was closed. So I didn't know if we. So I didn't know if we checked to find out how, how we make sure what's going out on that, what goes out, and just kinda be consistent with it, 'cause I got a notice that told, I happened to know it was closed 'cause somebody I knew asked me what was going on. I said, "I don't..." But then I did get a text that said it was now open, but I never got one to tell me it was closed.
Are you getting yours via text only?
Yes.
Okay, 'cause I got both.
Did you?
I did, too.
I didn't, I, I only got what said it was open. I didn't get the...